Okay, it is two o'clock. I'm going to go ahead and call the RNI Committee Regular Meeting for Tuesday, October 11th to order. It looks like we have a full quorum. All of the committee members are here. Michael Thomas is now a director on the board. And since we can only have one director on the committee, he is attending as a guest attendee. Chairman's report. Most of you know that our general manager, John Weichold, resigned effective November 15th. He is engaged and has moved to Santa Barbara. So we have appointed District Engineer, Utilities Manager Ray D'Enzo as acting general manager. So he now has three titles. Okay. I wanted to let everyone know that the terms for the committee members on RNI end on February 18th. So if you want to continue being on RNI, you do need to reapply. And I believe that we are going to post the application package after the meeting this Thursday. So just to let you know that. Do we have any ad hoc subcommittee reports? Okay, seeing none. Committee member communications. Does anybody have an announcement to make? Do you want to report briefly on your activities or do you have a question for clarification? I don't see any hands up. Okay. Now we're going to take public comment on any item within the jurisdiction of the RNI Committee, but not on our agenda today. So do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak? I don't see any hands up. Up. Yes, we do. Ms. Dickinson, would you like to speak, please? Go ahead and unmute.
Yeah, thank you. Oh, so you can't, I can't see be seen? Is my name comes up?
Your name, yeah, just your name comes up.
Oh, okay. Actually, this question goes to you, Chair Dean. I know that you were present via Zoom at the November 14th San Simeon Community Services District where they had a presentation on their CHIRP, their Coastal Hazard Response Plan and slash wastewater treatment plan options. But I wasn't aware that you made any comment or gave a report at Thursday's meeting. You are a part of the ad hoc committee for San Simeon with Mr., I think with David Pearson, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
But are you planning to give a report in today's meeting?
No, because we only had a preliminary meeting to hear what their issues are. And we are going to have another meeting. We haven't come up with any decisions or anything. We just listened to them.
But we're stakeholders and we are listed as one of the options of an alternate option.
Yes.
That's very serious. Where, and their commenters were asking that their wastewater be taken up to Cambria. So this is an issue that I'm really, I'm following and I was hoping the ad hoc committee would be and report back to us on what's going on in San Simeon. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We could give her a short report, I guess.
Okay, let me go ahead and let's see. You want to go ahead and give a report, David? We probably should have done that in our ad hoc committee reports.
Yeah. Yeah. So we've actually met with them twice. The first time was just to review what their position was and what they were thinking about. They have identified a number of sites within San Simeon. And they also wanted to talk to us about is would be, would we be open to the fact that they would like to either one, send us their wastewater for us to process or to allow them to cite a possible treatment plant on our property. So you know, we basically said we are open to discussions. We didn't give them any positive or negative feedback, I don't think. We then, we then offered to give them a little tour of the WRF, which we did. I guess that was last week. And at the same time, they wanted to look at a possible sighting where the evaporation pond is for a wastewater treatment plant that would consist of a plant and also a marshland treatment that, you know, other, other areas have done around the state. There was, you know, discussions about, you know, would it be possible that everybody said, yeah, there's a lot of pipe to run. We would have to consider all of that. We, we told them basically that, yes, we're still open to that. If that's what they wanted to present to us was as a plan, you know, the coastal commission is basically, you know, tasked them with talking to us and trying to get a, you know, regional concept at least going. We did. Ray D'Enzo, our utility manager, did tell them that if they did cite that and have a, one of those wetlands treatment facilities that they would also have to run pipe all the way to our facility as a backup. And they said, okay, they understood that. I don't think really because they're a disadvantaged community, I don't think money is going to be their problem as much as what they're able to do and what they're not able to do. So basically, you know, we just listened to what they wanted to try to look at and then we you know, told them that we were not opposed to further discussions, but.
I think you froze, David.
Discussion came to a halt.
Yeah. Ray, did you want to add anything to what David was saying? We were pretty much still just reviewing what it is they wanted to do. We haven't really come to any discussion among ourselves about that. So I wasn't planning on giving a report on this until the ad hoc committee reports came on to the next board meeting, but it, you know, what David said is pretty much what's gone on. So Mr. D'Enzo, do you want to add anything to that?
No, other than it seemed that, that San Simeon, they're exploring a whole range of options, different treatment types. And they didn't commit to any of that with, with us. So anyway, that's, that's all really that I needed to add to that.
Yeah, we haven't committed anything back to them either. So we're still just under reviewing and discussing what their issue is and what it is they, they think they want to do. So anyway, let me go ahead and unmute you again, Tina, so in case you had any more questions. You're permitted to talk. You just need to unmute. Are you still there, Ms. Dickinson?
I wasn't unmuted on your end. So yeah, well, thank you, David, for that. And I know you weren't at the stakeholder meeting on November 14th. At least you weren't identified as being there, but Karen was and Harry was in the Zoom. I was there physically with Deborah Scott. And that was a stakeholder meeting. We are considered stakeholders. There's a questionnaire on their website that was included in the presentation for any stakeholder to, to to fill out. And I'm going to send that out to a bunch of people because we, as you probably heard, Karen, and Harry, if he's listening, I don't know if he's attending today. But you heard the folks in San Simeon say primarily that their, their option would be to bring their waste to Cambria. So, you know, it's not fair if we're considered stakeholders that we're not being apprised from of what is going on. I mean, you know, if your ad hoc committee was formed from the RNI Committee and at least one of the members attended as I did, I mean, the next meeting is in January. This is moving forward. And at the same time as it's moving forward, the folks in San Simeon seem to have their number one option of bringing their waste to Cambria. However, I didn't get that feeling necessarily from the consultant. He said that options A and J were sort of being looked at seriously. I don't know. We'll have to see what happens in January, but this, this concerns us. And I just, I do think that we need to have way more transparency, even though the RNI may not have committed to anything. They're moving forward with certain things. And so there are going to be several more stakeholder meetings. The next one is in January and I think they go through April. Well, I just, you know, I just feel that Cambrians need to be aware of what San Simeon is thinking. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak again, Karen.
Yeah, thank you. And this was a presentation from their consultant. It wasn't an actual San Simeon CSD meeting. So it was just a consultant presenting all of their options and the input from the community. So I didn't think that was a meeting I needed to report on as part of the ad hoc committee. However, we did have a couple of meetings with Mr. Pearson and Mr. D'Enzo and several other utilities staff people. And I was planning on reporting on that after we've met again. So we will try to keep everyone posted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Dudzik.
Thank you, Director Dean. I just noticed that you all, I'm sure, are aware of the offshore wind lease auction that was just concluded. And I noticed that as part of the community involvement, a group of local communities, including the city, city of County of San Luis Obispo and many others put together a letter indicating their support and willingness to discuss, collaborate, and get, get integrated into the process. And I know the CCSD was not on the list of people who, of communities that were part of that collaborative effort. I just wanted to make sure if you were not aware of it, that, that effort, that the hands or the hand is out there and that group is very willing to discuss potential benefits and issues associated with the offshore wind with the local communities and Cambria being the closest community to, to those developments. I would think it would be to yours and everybody's benefit to have you involved at the table in those discussions.
Thank you, Mr. Dudzik. I did notice we weren't listed on there. Mr. D'Enzo, do you have any knowledge of whether we're going to be part of this discussion on the offshore wind? After all, it is going to be offshore from Cambria.
I'm afraid I, I wasn't contacted about that.
Okay. Thank you. Was that, was that it, Mr. Dudzik?
Well, I, I think Ray, I think there's still time, you know, to get involved. I can certainly drop you a note if you, if you don't have some contacts. I can see if I can find some appropriate contacts for you. But in any event, yeah, I do, I do think that would be very beneficial and there's time to do it. It's just, you don't want to wait. You want to get in early.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dudzik. Have to excuse me. I'm not used to putting people in and out here.
Director Dean, I just wanted to let Mr. Dudzik know if I'm open if he wanted to send me the communications.
Okay, great. Okay, um. Moving on to the consent agenda, if no one else has anything to say. I see Ms. Dickinson's hand is still up.
Karen, that's a mistake. I didn't have my hand up. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Shouldn't have been up.
Thank you. I couldn't figure out how to put it back down again. I'm sorry. It's not working quite right for me. There we go.
Where's Haley?
I know, it's okay. I'll get the hang of this. Okay, moving on. Agenda item two, A, consideration to approve the October 11th, 2022 regular meeting minutes. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes as they are written in the agenda packet? And does anybody have any changes or that they need to see in the minutes? Does everything look correct to everybody? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes as written?
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make that motion.
Okay, do we have a second? I don't see any hands.
I'll second it.
Okay. It was Stephen. Okay, let's do a roll call. Mr. Webb.
Hi.
Mr. Seaver.
Hi.
Mr. Fowles.
Hi.
And Mr. Pearson.
Hi.
Okay, four eyes. Thank you. Okay, moving on to regular business, agenda item three A is discussion and consideration of the 2023 Resources and Infrastructure Committee meeting dates. And since we are going to be taking applications for new members, probably be within the next couple of weeks, I was thinking maybe we would only set the first three meetings of the year. And then once new committee members were seated, we could go ahead and have them be involved in setting the rest of the meeting dates. So our meetings are normally the second Monday of the month at two o'clock. And the second Monday of January would be the ninth. Is January 9th okay with everyone or does anyone have a conflict with that date? Okay.
Well, Director Dean, I won't be here on January 9th. But I, I'm not sure I'm needed at that meeting, so.
Okay. I'm not sure any of us may be meeting needed at that meeting if we don't have anything to work on, but we just leave the date as is. We can always call a special meeting when you get back. If there's something urgent you need us to work on. Okay, that on February, the second Monday of the month is February 13th. Does anybody have an issue with February 13th? Not seeing any hands. March 13th would be the second Monday of March. Does anybody have a conflict with March 13th? Seeing none. Okay, so we're looking at January 9th, February 13th and March 13th, all at 2:00 PM. Can I have a motion to accept the, the dates for those three meetings?
Also move.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, do a roll call. David?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Brad?
Hi.
And Stephen? Thank you. Okay, next item on regular business is agenda item B. This is an update on the CDP application process, the Instream Flow Study and the Section 7 Endangered Species Act consultation. I'll have Mr. D'Enzo give us the updates and then I'll take questions from the committee and take public comment after that.
Okay, thank you, Director Dean. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen just so that it's easy to follow the pattern. I hope you can see on the screen that says Instream Flow Study on it. Just give me a thumbs up if that's what you see.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and tackle these in, in a somewhat logical order, at least the way I view it. I'll go ahead and cover the topic of Instream Flow Study. The Instream Flow Study, we submitted our, our administration draft to Still Waters for their, for their review and for incorporation of our comments. The, the draft date or the, the, the next stage of the review process will be a draft review that's going to go to the Technical Advisory Committee. Technical Advisory Committee consists of of the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, California Department of Fish and Game, State Parks, County, and also the Coastal Commission. They will be, they will be reviewing that draft and I anticipate that they will be getting that draft by the week of 12/26. After that, there's going to be a discussion and incorporation of the, the TAC, the Technical Advisory Committee comments. I anticipate that to happen sometime in January, probably in mid-January sometime. And then after those comments are, are discussed and incorporated, we will present the results of the Instream Flow Study to the board and I anticipate sometime in February of 2023. So that's the current, that's the current flow for that relating to all of this. All of these are all related. So I'm going to cover, I'm going to go ahead and cover the next the portion of the agenda item. And of course, you know, you're, you're welcome to ask me questions about any of these after this mini presentation. So as far as the CDP application process and the Section 7 ESA process is concerned, the ESA, of course, is the Endangered Species Act consultation. And the nexus of this is because of part of the, the WRF project includes a lagoon discharge to the confluence near San Simeon Creek and Van Gordon Creek. It is, it is within Army Corps jurisdiction. And because of that, a consultation with them is, is required for us to be able to, to construct that, the extension of that lagoon discharge. Because of this, so, so, you know, and, and the council, that, that process is continuing. How, how all of this relates to the CDP application, if you recall, the last portion, the last piece of information that we need to provide to the county is a preliminary concurrence of of the adaptive management plan. And so all of, so these particular, so this, this this chart kind of shows a little bit of a parallel action that we're, that we're doing at the moment. So right now, our Section 7 consultant is going to be discussing with Army Corps of Engineers and also the National Marine Fisheries Services or NIMPs is another when we use that term commonly, because we want to, we've decided that the data from the task one of the Instream Flow Study that that's being completed right now by Still Waters, that data is going to be valuable in informing our Section 7 consultation. That's why, that's how all of this started getting related. So there's going to be a discussion open with Army Corps of Engineers and the National Marine Fisheries Services regarding incorporation of both Task 1 and Task 2 Instream Flow Studies. That's going to happen, you know, this week and next week, you know, we anticipate that that discussion and meeting will, will, will get started and hopefully scheduled sometime either this week or next week. In, in a parallel path, we will staff, will be submitting a letter to mainly the California Department of Fish and Wildlife and U.S. and U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services, a letter requesting preliminary concurrence of AMP. This is all possible because of all of the, the studies that we've done up to this time relating the, the Section 7 process that started and also the Instream Flow Studies, both Task 1 and Task 2. So all of this will be incorporated into this letter requesting this preliminary concurrence. Typically, the, the response process is about 45 days. They, of course, have, they, they, they reserve the right to always extend that, but we hope that they'll be able to at least consider our request within that timeframe. We expect to submit that by the week of 12/19/2020, of this year, 2022. And then after all of this is, is done and the process started and hopefully some discussions with with these agencies that I mentioned will, 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 you know, will be commencing in both of these two tracks. We hope to have a discussion again with the county regarding the results of preliminary concurrence and the results of the Instream Flow Study. Because they too are also, you know, awaiting those results as well. It's kind of like a sidebar to their request for the preliminary concurrence of AMP. Because all of this is related to, to the project activities. So I anticipate that discussion will be, you know, with the county will be in January or in February, just to see where we're at as far as is essentially giving them a response to the question of preliminary, preliminary preliminary concurrence of the adaptive management plan. So that that's the update for the, you know, the, the Instream Flow Study, CDP and the Section 7 ESA and and I am open for questions regarding this particular topic.
Okay, does anybody on the committee have a question for Mr. D'Enzo? Mr. David?
Yeah. Not that I think that it's necessary, but is there any plan to run any of these reports? Like the Instream Flow Study before this committee prior to bringing it to the full board?
I can include the RNI, you know, and when we submit, when, when we, when we engage the TAC, I can give you all a copy as well.
Okay, when do you expect to engage the TAC again?
Well, they, we, you know, we, well, we, we don't, we don't engage the TAC. Well, when I say engage the TAC, that's when we send them the draft of the report. And that's when I'm going to send you the draft of the report. And I'm anticipating the week of December 26th is when that's going to happen. When we, when we send that draft out, when we actually meet with them, you know, that kind of depends on when, you know, they've had sufficient time to review the, the, the report and and typically the review period is, you know, two to three weeks. So if, you know, when they're, when they're in a place where they're, they reviewed it sufficiently that they can have a discussion with us, that's when we would schedule the meeting.
Okay, so David.
And that would happen in January sometime.
Okay, so David, were you asking for a copy of the reports before he submitted them to the TAC? Is that what your question was?
Oh, no, no, not at all. In fact, I don't know that we should get a copy at all of the draft. And if, and if you're going to send it to us, you might as well post it on the, on the website, but I, you know, as a draft, I would just But I, you know, as a draft, I would just send it on. What I was asking was, once you get the full letter or the full report finalized with all their comments and everything, would that come before us, before it goes to the board? I could, I don't know that that's necessary, okay, at all. I was just asking if you're going to try to do that or not.
Well, but by the time, so, once the TAC has commented under report and those comments are incorporated into the report, that would be, in, in my mind, that, that would be board-ready. You know, and, and, and I agree, and in which case it would be public, you know, regardless of whether, you know, the RNI sees it or the public sees it, because, you know, we would present that to the board. And then, you know, they'll have an opportunity to comment, of course. And if there's any comments that they have that they want to incorporate into the report, you know, that's also a possibility.
Okay.
Good. Yeah, I think that's more than sufficient. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for Ray before I go to the public? Okay, let's see, we've got Ms. Dickinson. Let me. Okay, I had you here a minute ago.
There we are.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, I, you know, since this, this item referred to endangered species within the scope of, of this agenda item, is there a particular endangered species that Mr. D'Enzo had in mind or that the, or that Stillwater in their draft report? I mean, what, since that was in the, there is no staff report in today's meeting, just the one-liner on the agenda item. I also would like to ask Mr. D'Enzo, when did Stillwater send the draft report? When did Mr. D'Enzo send, and/or staff, send questions and comments to Stillwater? When, if, I don't know, when did he or staff receive and Mr. D'Enzo receive a response to his questions and comments to the draft report? If he hasn't already, when is he expecting them? And I would, I would actually, I do not concur with members of the committee. I do believe that, that we should be able to see the draft report. After all, the rape payers paid for this, and it was a long time coming. And we need to see it. It is, I'm not, it's my understanding that even members of the TAC will not see the draft until the questions and comments that staff, staff have sent us to water have been made. So the Technical Advisory Committee has not even seen, to my understanding, the draft report. Why not? If they, if they're the Technical Advisory Committee, shouldn't they have? And I certainly would like to see the report once the questions are, are answered. But I, so I would also like to see what the questions and comments were that were made by the district to Stillwater and possibly to Mr. Merk. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dickinson. I'm going to go ahead and take all of the questions from the public first. And I'll let Mr. D'Enzo answer them all unless, unless Ray, you want to do them one person at a time?
I'll, I'll go ahead and answer these questions. So, well, the reason why the TAC has not seen the draft is because it wasn't, there was no draft to send to them yet. The, the draft that, that I'm talking about was the, we, we call it the admin draft, which is basically, it's a rough draft, I guess, is a better way to say it. We received that in, in mid-October. And we, there was a lot of back and forth between, between us and them. We had, we had a couple of meetings. We had some requests for information. So that, you know, that was the process that took place, you know, October and then November. And then I did submit it back to them early December, you know, after we finalized our comments. After we, you know, the, the information and the clarifications were, were resolved, we were able to send that, I believe, in, in early December. I forget which, what, what the date it was. So now it, it, it is back in, in Stillwater's hands. But, you know, they're, they're not surprised at the comments. We, we had already submitted some preliminary comments, you know, to the draft as, you know, as we were going along within that process. So the preliminary drafts are, are typically not released to the public because it is, it's preliminary. There, there, there's, there needs to be a discussion about, about the data. There needs to be some clarification. And, you know, that's, that's what we're going, that's what we go through. That's, that's a common process in, in these technical studies. So I think, I think the most useful draft is going to be like, you know, after the, the TAC has seen it and then, you know, their comments on it. And then, and how, how those comments are incorporated into the final report. You know, it's, it's, it's a technical study, you know, I mean, there's, there's, there is some room for interpretation, but there's not a whole lot of room for interpretation. So I keep that in mind. But all of that will be made clear once the, you know, once it goes through the process with the TAC and then, and then when we submit it to the board, and then when we present it to the board, there's other comments will be, be available during that time as well.
And I think our other question is what endangered species are we looking?
Oh, right, right. So the, the endangered species are, are tide-water goby, which is, it looks like, it looks like a fish, but it also looks like an eel. And then there's, of course, the, the steelhead salmon. And there's the, the California red-legged frog. That is a California endangered species list, but it's all, all of that, all of those three species are in, on endangered species.
Okay.
Karen, may I follow up very quickly with, with one more thing?
Okay, if you, can you keep it brief? Because we have a long.
Sure.
People waiting to ask to speak. Thanks.
Well, I, as many of you or some of you may remember, at the presentation, a report on the AMP made by Ms. Cleveland and Mr. Yates, I made it very clear that I have been observing, photographing, documenting steelhead in San Simeon Creek for three years. I have sent my data to Cal Fish and Wildlife, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, to all of the agencies on the TAC. And so they're well aware, but also, in, in addition, I have, I was invited out by Cal Fish and Wildlife on, on a tour. They, they want, they've contacted me and invited me out. But I wanted to say that I'm not the only one. There are a number of people who, maybe by accident, have been seeing steelhead at Washburn. I myself have seen two adult trout steelhead there. But a number of locals who are just strolling through the, the, the park are, are finding them. There are about seven, I think, in all that I counted. And some of them have sent me their information, their photographs. With their permission, I forward them, them to the agencies, you know, Cal Fish and Wildlife, et cetera. Or I've asked them if they would like to forward them, but they are being recorded as data. And so if steelhead for any reason is becoming a problem, I can assure you that I have many, many photos over three years and documentation. And so Cal Fish and Wildlife have also been, they have been observing and photographing and documenting steelhead. So I just wanted to add that for this record, should steelhead be, you know, be one of the endangered species that might be somewhat of concern or has been brought up in the study itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Heinrichs.
Hello, thank you. Yes, and thank you for that report. I, I certainly agree that the public should see this report. I'm curious about the Merk, the associates who were hired back in March or April and who were committed to giving the district a report in September, which we never got. And they were supposed to be doing the biological assessment. So I'm a little unclear about why, you know, the in-stream flow study is, I understood about the water and the hydrology, but the biological assessment was something separate. So do we have that report? Has that already been given? And I missed it. And Mr. D'Enzo, you mentioned in the board meeting the other day that there was an ESA issue. Can you tell us what the issue is? Thank you.
Mr. D'Enzo?
Yeah, I shouldn't be giving dates out anymore. Anyway, regarding the, the issue with the ESA, what I meant, I, what I meant to say there was the, there is some really good data that has come from the Task One in-stream flow study that we would like to, to incorporate and to, to inform the, the Section Seven process. The other thing too, which which could, which, which, which I may have deemed an issue was we also did some design alternatives for the, the extension of the, of the, what do you call it, the, the lagoon discharge. That was, you know, there, there was some, I, I guess, that could also be one of the issues that I meant also at that time. Because we, we needed to submit a design to the Army Corps of Engineers. It's, it's pretty much like our design concept, and there was a couple of alternatives and which required at that time a surveyor to, to go out and, and, and do the survey. And also was an opportunity to, to, you know, survey out the, the limits of the, of, of the stream overflows, all of those kind of things. That, that, that's all part of that, that study. So the biological assessment is not, not started yet. And the, the issue with that too is that the project is somewhat small, because it's like, it's not, it's probably not going to include as much of the operations as we had thought was going to be included. But if it's, if the, if the scope of the project is just to, for, for Army Corps to look at the impact of the, of the, of the, of the extension, of the pipe extension, that's a pretty small project scope. But, but again, it, it remains to be seen, because like, you know, we, we do hope that, 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 that Army Corps and those other federal agencies will, will consider the wider scope of the project. But to answer your question, the biological assessment has not started yet, because those issues are, you know, as I mentioned before, they're, they're, they're starting those conversations with the, with, with, with those agencies to, to start the process.
Excuse me to follow up, but isn't the biological assessment the required document to make endangered species decisions and develop the AMP?
Mr. D'Enzo?
So not necessarily, because the, the biological assessment, well, the, the actual federal study is, you know, the, the reason why this, this, this conversation actually started was because we are in federal jurisdiction. We are in Army Corps, Army Corps jurisdiction with that lagoon discharge. And because we are in that, that, you know, that, that it was required that some kind of a biological assessment needed to be done. The, the, the logical conclusion would be a biological opinion by, by the Army Corps. But it's not necessarily true that they would issue a biological opinion. But in reality, a biological opinion would, would need to be, would need to be done in order for there to be a comment on the AMP. But as far as the AMP was concerned, that was, that was generated separate from the biological assessment. But you're, you're right, the, the AMP did, did suggest that we needed to do a biological assessment because of the extension of that, that lagoon discharge.
Okay. Does that answer your questions, Ms. Heinrichs?
Actually, no. I, I, I couldn't hardly even follow that. It sounded like, you know, I mean, this was originally done by the board, eighty-nine thousand dollars, because it was required. So now he says it's not required, but it is required, but it's not required. I mean, I, I couldn't even follow it.
Okay, well, let me answer it more clearly. So what, what exactly, can you answer, can you ask me the question? Again, please, what, what, what is the question?
Yeah, where is the report from Merk Associates, which was commissioned back in March or April, which you have answered, that it has not even been started? But my understanding was that that biological, I mean, the AMP is about managing, responding to changes, it, it things that might affect the biological systems, particularly the endangered species. I don't see how you can create an AMP without having the biological assessment that tells you what's there and what isn't.
Yes, that's why we're doing that.
But you said it hadn't started and that you're going to do the AMP before you get the assessment, before it's even started.
The, the app is done. It's like.
Right, without the, without the biological assessment.
Okay, and we're getting into an argument here.
But no, I'm just trying to find out what's going on.
Now, the, the app was done. The, the app was done back, you know, through the, the, the suggestion of the, of the SEIR, and then that, so that's why the app was done. And the app does recommend a biological assessment, assessment be done. So that's what we're doing.
Okay, so this, this, basically, when you say that the biological assessment informs the AMP, this is something that's going to end up being attached to the AMP later, but wasn't required when the AMP was done to begin with?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Was that it for your questions, Ms. Heinrichs?
I, I will let it go for now. I.
Okay.
I mean, I'm mystified by this process, which was so urgent for the board to spend eighty-nine thousand dollars on last spring and now is irrelevant.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Bentonhausen. Go ahead and unmute.
Thank you very much, President Dean. You can hear in my voice, I'm a victim of one of the plagues that has hit the grammar school. It's one of the viruses, and it is a knockout, to put it mildly, but I want to try to be coherent. So please interrupt me if I'm off on some sort of totally unintelligible spin beyond my usual standards. I want to say at the moment that I did not see Mr. D'Enzo's notes or whatever on the screen. It did not show up at all here in my home computer. So I don't know who saw that, but it was not I. So I don't know who saw that, but it was not I, and I suspect maybe others in the public. But I, so I am talking now simply from my notes. And I want to say that over the years, of which there have been quite a few years, I have wondered again and again about this process. I don't wonder mystically about it. I wonder how, what exactly is the nature of each component? Why is each component required or optional? Who is responsible, et cetera? But I simply have not heard any time, including, I, I apologize if I offend you, Mr. D'Enzo, including today, I have not heard a coherent presentation that's intelligible to us public, who are not inside this whole process, about what's going on out there at San Simeon Creek with the, with the water reclamation facility, et cetera. And I, I, for example, isn't the case that the draft review is no longer the preliminary draft review? Because the staff of CCSD has rewritten the preliminary draft? Or did the staff of CCSD inform still, who, who did the revision of the preliminary draft that now leads us simply to the draft? And I'm a bit confused about the meaning of the term draft. Again, that whole process will be an issue. Who exactly is going to do the revising and response to TAC? And all their comments that will come in? They have not seen this so far, so as far as I can tell. And yet, according to my notes, they are going to get this draft, so called, on the 26th of this month. And they might, well, they, they probably will report back by mid-January. That's two weeks over holidays. I am tired of getting vague stipulations of dates and responsibility, vague stipulation of the key components of each step. It's, it's becoming somewhat offensive, if I may just be blunt. It's very unclear to me right now, what is the relationship between Stillwater having submitted whatever they think they submitted? And the relationship between Stillwater and then this conversation that's taking place with ACE? Is Stillwater at all involved in that? Why or why not? Is there material not germane to what ACE is looking at? I, I could go on rather tediously and certainly repetitively beyond your entertainment. But I want to say that, once again, once again, the public has seen no written document here from any of these subordinate component steps. We have no idea what exactly is being produced by the organization that we fund, namely this Community Services District. I can tell I'm getting this, this bug. I want to assure you that, because others have had it too, we've talked about. This is a bad news bug we've got. Please, 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 people, wear your masks. But that's a parenthetical comment. I would like, please, to be able to understand substantively what in the world we are funding way beyond the original limits of this project. I will shut up because I'm getting myself a little blah blah. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you have any comments here, Mr. D'Enzo?
I, I do want to be clear that, that the work that Stillwaters is doing, they, they, they're, they're, they're developing a professional document. And, and they have to, you know, they have to follow their professional principles. And so I, I, you know, the district is not telling them, you need to say this. You know, I, I, I do want to make that clear, you know? And it's a, it was more like the whole conversation about, about, you know, and when they do their first draft and they show staff, the idea there is that there's clarification, you know? Did we outline the limits of, of the scope? And then we provide the, the, the data, because, you know, there, there's, there was historical data that, you know, even goes beyond the three years, you know, that, that's mentioned. We have to be sure that all the modeling that was done prior to, to this was also, was also incorporated. And the methodology needed to be clarified, you know, is to, to, you know, to be sure that the methodology is appropriate to the type of streams that we have here in, in San Simeon. So those are the types of questions that, in conversation that, that goes back and forth. When, when I talk about, you know, we, we got the admin draft from Stillwaters. So, but, but, you know, those clarifications need to be made. But, but the bottom line is, is that, that Stillwater is a, a reputable firm, great experience of doing environmental studies and doing Instream Flow Studies. And, you know, they, they are not going to compromise their work by, you know, by some, you know, somehow reporting something false. So I, I wanted to make that clear. And so, so the product is going to be a good product when, when we get it. And then, and then hopefully that when, when, when the TAC reviews it, you know, they'll also be able to answer their questions and question the methodologies and question the data and the scope of work. All of those, all of those things will need to take place. So, so yeah, just like with, with all science, there needs to be a discussion, you know, because like specifically here, like it's, you're sensing the difficulty of me trying to separate pieces of the project when they're, when in reality, they're all related. So, and I'm, I'm afraid that I do have trouble separating Section 7 from Task 1, Task 2, Instream Flow Study, and, and the AMP and biological assessment and all of that. It's, it's some, it's, you know, I try to separate them because there are like specific scope of works related to each. But, but I, I, you know, you know, hopefully, like, you know, more of these discussions will take place so that we'll be able to clarify it even more.
Thank you. Bob Fountain?
Yes, thank you, Director Dean. I just want to comment on some of the things that Mr. D'Enzo provided on the chart and such. First, I'd like to say I concur with the previous public speakers regarding the, the need, I believe, for public access to the draft report. And one of the reasons I believe that is the case because we do have people in the public that have the technical background to understand technical reports. Yeah, at least to ascertain the good from the bad and, and the BS from the truth. So I think that's important, that those comments are allowed to be seen even in the draft form. But that being said, if I understand correctly from the, the chart that Mr. D'Enzo provided, was that the TAC would not receive the draft report until after the CCSD public comments have been addressed back with Stillwater. And I think, I think, you know, I understand where you're coming from, that, you know, science is science and you want to allow internal discussion. But once again, these TAC personnel are intelligent, tactical people. You should, at the very least, allow them the opportunity to see the original Stillwater report, draft report. So they have access to it, whether or not they choose to comment on the changes. Therefore, at least they have an idea what was produced by Stillwater. Obviously, if there's misunderstandings and string technical things within the report that CCSD has to address back to Stillwater, that's understandable. And I'm sure they can decipher that from anything else. But I think it's important that there is clarity and transparency across the board here. And, and I want to reiterate the need, I believe, that the public can, can see these reports as well. So that we are kept in the loop, just as we are ratepayers. We have a stake in this, and we want to understand as best as possible what, what it is. And finally, that one chart that Mr. D'Enzo provided regarding the first statement, I was a little confused about what was the actual action occurring with the US Army Corps of Engineer and the National Marine Fisheries Service, also known as NIMs? So that whether they are being asked to participate in the TAC or because of their proximity to the impact area, that they have the right to make assessments of, of the impact from their perspective. And I would like to under, comment also that with Ray speaking, that he didn't, he didn't believe that the Army Corps would have any comments to make on the biological assessment. I do believe that the National Marine Fisheries Service would definitely have some comments to make on the biological assessment. So I think keeping it open for everybody, we all are adults. We can all understand that draft is draft. And, and it's up for it to be modified and such. But knowing what the original report is from the science itself, I think is important for both the TAC group to receive as well as the public. Thank you.
Thank you. So on that, it sounds like Dr. Bentonhausen didn't see your charts that you put up. Would you like to put the chart back up again while you answer Mr. Fountain's question about, he had a question on the first chart you showed?
Yeah, I'll try to see, like, roll that up really quick.
I think you mentioned Army Corps of Engineers and the National Marine Fishery Service on the second chart.
Yeah, so, yeah, on this, on this chart here. Okay, can, can you see that, that chart here in front of you on the screen?
I can, Mr. Fountain. Can you see that?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
So, so Army Corps, you know, you, you, you know, you mentioned that, that, about the biological assessment. Well, the Army Corps is the one that, that would do the biological assessment. And they're the ones, they're, they're the lead agency. And they would coordinate with NIMs and also with, with other federal agencies and possibly even state agencies. But, but it is a federal document, and, and they are the ones that are going to be doing the biological, the biological assessment. Once, you know, and, you know, all of this information is going to, to inform that the incorporation of the Task 1 Instream Flow Study that Stillwaters is doing. And of course, all the data from Task 2 is already available. All of that will need to, to be incorporated into, into the, the biological assessment. So that's, that's what I'm talking about with, so that discussion is, is, is getting, is getting started with, with Army Corps. That other one, that submit letter requesting preliminary concurrence, that's the one that, that staff is going to send to, to those other agencies, mainly the California Fish and Wildlife, and also for Regional Board, and also US Fish and Wildlife, to request their review of our AMP in the face of all of the data that we generated so far, you know, including the Instream Flow Study, Task 1 and Task 2, and also the, the modeling that we've done relating to those, and also the, the current progress on, on the Section 7 consultation process. So all of that is happening at the same time. They're, they're happening in parallel. And of course, the discussion with the county is going to happen later once we hopefully find out some information from, from these other two tasks that we're doing.
Okay, does that answer your question, Mr. Fountain?
Well, I, it, it went beyond where I was referring to, but referring to that action discussion with Army Corps of Engineer, National Marine Fisheries Services, incorporation of both Task 1 and Task 2 Instream Flow Studies. If I heard correctly, when he, when Mr. D'Enzo was initially stating this, I, there was some discussion, I don't know who without, who else was on it. But it had, I thought he said that the, he doubted that the Army Corps of Engineer would be involved or get involved or do a biological assessment. And I thought that was very odd. Now, what I, I just heard him say is that they are doing one, which, you know, once again, it's confusing. We're getting confusing information here for all the public comments that are going on here. And, you know, the either it's on or off, you know, hot or cold. It's, it can't be both. And, and, and he did not address the National Marine Fisheries Service. He said that the Army Corps of Engineer is the lead. Okay, if they're the lead, what is the National Marine Fisheries Service doing involved? Because they are also involved with anadromous fish that, that migrate between freshwater and saltwater. So they have a stake in this area as well. And I just wanted to understand what that was. Plus, reiterate whether or not the TAC group will be receiving the original draft report from Stillwaters prior to CCSD modifications, or at least be offered the opportunity to look at it if they so choose.
Okay. Do you have any further comments, Mr. D'Enzo?
Well, I would have to discuss that with, with Stillwaters about that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fountain. Okay, let me see if I can. Okay. We can go ahead and move on to regular business item. See update on the PG&E IGA process. I think we've, unless the members of the committee have any other questions for Ray on this topic, I think we've pretty much covered most things. And I don't see any hands, members of the committee. Okay, let's go ahead and move on to the update on the PG&E IGA process.
Okay, I'll go ahead and share my screen again because, so regarding the, the PG&E project, we had a kickoff meeting. Once, once all of the, the financing and stuff got, got settled, we had our kickoff meeting on, because it was just last week, last Wednesday, December 7. And we met with the PG&E team and also the design consultants, Design Consultant Consistent of MKN, and also Southland, which was, those, those are two main design consultants that are in, that are working with PG&E and with us regarding these projects. The purpose of that meeting mainly was to, was to coordinate on the design build process and also the construction management questions that they had. And also the permitting, the different types of permitting that we're going to need to, to move forward with, with the project. And mainly the, the project that we're, we're talking about at the moment is the, all of the, the work that's going to be done in the wastewater treatment plant. The immediate outcome of that kickoff meeting was to focus on project items that have long lead times on equipment. For example, the backup generator, we're going to need to size that. Uh, for example, the backup generator, uh, we're going to need to, um, to size that. Uh, and, you know, they need to determine a the particular specs for that and and to order that that generator. Because it's, uh, there is a long lead time on on getting, uh, that type of equipment nowadays. Uh, we also went over the schedule on, uh, the 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 schedule on, you know, where we are in the design build process, how long that's going to take. Uh, that's going to take about, um, uh, like a four months or so. Uh, actual construction will probably start with the electrical switch gear, uh, which will probably start in, uh, in May of twenty twenty three. Uh, and then, parallel with that, you know, the design process for the other portions of the the wastewater treatment plant will will also be commencing. Uh, actual construction is scheduled to be right around October of twenty twenty three. And anticipated project completion is still, uh, October of twenty twenty four. Uh, so that, um, that there is the 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 update on the P J N E I G A project.
Okay, so the electrical switch gear and the generator are the first items that are going to be done?
Yes, yes.
And once that's done, is that when you're going to start doing some of the other smaller projects that don't have quite as far of a lead time?
Correct, yes.
I'm excited to finally see some of this stuff, uh, get done. And it's been a long time coming. Um, Mr. Pearson.
I'd like to suggest that a sign go up in front of the wastewater treatment plant, talking about what's being done and and, uh, um, giving kind of a, uh, having that site updated as progress is made, uh, so that the community can easily see the progress, uh, that's being made when where their money is being spent.
Very good idea. Anybody else?
Southland ought to do that.
I think it should be put on a banner on the website too, across the top that we we're working on this. So, um, does anybody else have a question? For Mr. Danson? Oh, okay, I don't see any hands up in the public either. Okay, well, it's a good, it's good to see this finally getting going. Okay, if no one has any questions on this, um, let's go ahead and move on. Regular business item three D, zero liquid discharge pilot project update.
Really, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen again. So regarding the zero liquid discharge project, I wanted to, uh, uh, like, reiterate, uh, some of the things that that this is proposing to do. So, uh, the 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 idea is, is that it's processing the existing brine so that there's little need for ocean outfall or trucking the brine for disposal. So, um, look, anytime that product water is created through through the the microfiltration of R O system, uh, about eight percent of that water is the concentrated brine as a result of the 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 process that we go through to remove those, uh, all of the the salts from the water. Um, that's, that's still a lot of water. So like if we were to, if we were, for example, to run the plant twenty four hours a day, it it would generate about forty thousand to fifty thousand gallons of brine. Uh, so obviously, there needs to be a way to process that. That's significant, that's a significant amount of water and a significant amount of trucking that would be needed to to, um, to process all of that, you know, to transport all of that. So if we had a zero liquid discharge, meaning if we had a way to process that forty to fifty thousand gallons, uh, it would, and if it would result in what's called, uh, you know, the, what this project is proposing is that it could take that concentrated brine, process it, and the result would be like a salt oatmeal, like, you know, uh, type of mash. Uh, and so instead of water being transported is that, you know, it's going to just transport like essentially solid, like a solid waste product that could be trucked, you know, instead of three trucks, truck trips per day, three or four truck trips per day, it would be one truck a month or something like that, that that could be taken to the landfill. Um, and, uh, and then the pilot project would be a small scale experiment essentially, but it would be to test the appropriate technology. Uh, staff has, uh, been in coordination at the beginning with with Global Water Innovations. They're the ones that that, uh, that are performing the project. Global Water Water Innovations is the consultant that's that's working with us and they are, uh, they're working with us through a grant. So again, uh, this costs the district nothing. Um, but, uh, all of the information that they that they glean from us and and have provided to the National Alliance for Water Innovation, that's that's this group here. That they're the ones that are actually providing the money. Um, uh, all of it has been, it went through the different project reviews and it's gone now through, um, uh, now, you know, when when are we actually going to be awarded the project? So the next slide. So the actual expected date for selection notification is actually going to be this week sometime. This is the anticipated, um, selection. So it's hopefully, it's just a formality because we did get indication uh, from Global Water Innovations that that the the National Association of Water Innovation uh, likes our project and wants to move forward with it. So, uh, the the formality of getting selected, um, we're anticipating this week, sometime this week. Um, and once that is, once that notification is is given, then the actual project will now be, you know, implemented. Uh, you know, we will need to to, you know, to get the the proper coordination with with Regional Board and Coastal, uh, to be sure that, you know, they're okay with the pilot project, you know, as far as permitting issues are concerned. Um, which Global Water Innovation is going to help us with because, uh, you know, the the actual project scope and all of that would need to be submitted to those agencies uh, for them to allow us to do this pilot project. So the hence the anticipation project date is not going to be till about April or May of next year. Um, and the actual pilot project is not going to be a long project span. Uh, we're anticipating about a week is how long the the pilot study is, the pilot project is going to take. Uh, but again, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll see more specific details as the date draws nearer. But, um, but yeah, it's, uh, I'm, I personally, you know, uh, pretty excited about this project as well because, uh, the implications would be would be really awesome if, um, if if everything works the way, uh, it it's designed to work. But what we should know sometime this week, if we're selected, we should be notified, um, uh, and which it looks like we will be selected. And then, uh, May, April, May of next year is when the actual pilot project is going to begin. And again, I'm available for questions on this as well.
Okay, Jim?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Ray. Um, I wanted to ask about the, uh, the resulting, uh, water that you extract from the brine. What condition is that water in? I mean, it's already gone through R O and a and a lot of steps. How clear or pure is that water? Uh, how close to drinking water can it be? And where are you planning to put that water once you're extracted?
Good question, good, good question there. So what they, what they've told us is that, uh, that water, uh, two things could be done with it. It could be, again, uh, you know, reinjected. You know, it could be used as product water to be injected into the injection well, that's that's one possibility. Uh, and then, uh, but the most likely possibility is since it's went, since it went through a process, uh, it would most likely need to go back to the the percolation pond, um, which which is indirectly can be used as product water, is indirect product water. But, uh, because it goes through a process, most likely the regional board would not allow us to directly inject that water into the injection well. But but it's not going to be wasted, it's going to be, you know, uh, perked again and for us to be able to reuse.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, so you can run it through the W R F again, or you have to put it in the perk ponds first and and.
Well, uh, yeah, th- those are options, uh, you know, again, depending on the the quality of the water. Uh, and that's definitely, that's that's part of the whole pilot project thing is to determine what what really is the quality of that of that now product water, uh, as a result of the process. So, um, but yeah, but the the idea is to to reuse it somehow, you know, whether it's indirect, uh, whether it's direct injection or indirect or or if it's fed back into the 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 microfiltration to be used as, uh, to be processed again.
Okay, so you said the pilot project would run about a week, so we would have to run the W R F during this pilot project, obviously, right? So would we be running it to produce product water and injecting the product water at that time as well? Or would this be, um, kind of a closed loop thing?
Yeah, that that's that's something that, uh, that's something that I I did tell, uh, Global Water Innovations that, uh, that that we tried, uh, the possibility of running it as a test, but, uh, you know. But I I don't know if they're going to allow us to directly inject it, quite frankly. But I I know that's something that that's going to be in the details when we, uh, once we get selected for the project, we'll move forward with the with submitting a scope of work to to these agencies.
Okay, well, one good thing is it probably would be, it's less carbon footprint, definitely doing just one load of this concentrated mush than all these multiple truckloads a day going to an ocean outfall. So that's a good thing. Yeah, um, anybody else on the committee have a question before I go to the public? I don't see any hands, so Crosby and or Laura.
Good afternoon, Chair Dean. I know it's a little bit early in the stage to be talking about some of these details, but I would just caution this committee and the district that there's a little bit of confusion right now about who's responsible for which parts of this project. In particular, I'm talking about the permitting required. Uh, most likely, you're going to have to have a permit just to run the W R F and and I'm pretty sure you're going to need to have a permit to to run the, uh, Global Water Innovations part of the of the system as well, especially if the product water is injected or pumped back into the aquifer in any form. So, uh, basically, I think that the district thinks that global water innovation is going to do it all. And global water innovations, it's implying that they think the C C S D is going to be responsible for all the permitting. So this kind of thing needs to be straightened out before it, you know, you get too far down the road. And, uh, and also another thing is the, some of the initial batches of of purified water from the global water innovation system are highly experimental, they have to be tested for water quality. They cannot be put back into the aquifer, they'll probably have to be trucked away. So, you know, who who's responsible for trucking away the the early batches of product water? These questions need to be, you need to start looking at them now rather than waiting until it's, uh, you're deep in the middle of it. So anyway, that's my my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fountain?
Um, yes, hello, uh, yeah, regarding the zero liquid discharge, uh, the company Global Innovations, uh, can you tell us if there, if they have previous data studies? Uh, this may have already been reported, but I'm not aware of it, uh, having to do with, uh, the actual amount of water that is extracted from the, uh, total amount that is absorbed within the 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 product that initiated it. In other words, uh, you say it comes out as an oatmeal mash, so to speak, which tells me that there's still a certain amount of liquid involved there. And yes, you can go through another iteration with the cost involved in doing that. But I just wanted to understand what the company is projecting their, uh, zero liquid discharge. Is it how close to zero is it, uh, that they're exact, uh, removing? And, uh, and then when you go ahead and do this pilot program that you're planning to do, will that be something that you'll actually be testing for to see if you know the volume of water that is going through, that is being, uh, uh, processed? And what is extracted, how much, uh, uh, percentage is actually extracted? To get an idea of just how, uh, how, uh, perfect this zero liquid discharge process is. I I'm hoping it is very good, but I just wanted to make sure that that is the case. So, uh, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Danson, I I think, um, in some of the previous discussions we've had of this, you've said it takes ninety five percent of the water out, or that's what they're projecting?
Yeah, or more, I, uh, and and quite frankly, I mean, all of the, all of the points that, uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Cosby Schwartz said, I mean, those are all, yeah, all of those are true statements. We need to, you know, we definitely need to consider those. And also, I'm just as curious, you know, what what Mr. Pound said. I'm, 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 I I've heard the claims, but I I also am very curious myself of what is this really going to look like? And how much of a percentage of water is actually going to be extracted? I'm, that's why it's a pilot project. I'm, I'm, I'm just as curious as as everyone here, um, that's listening.
Thank you. Mr. Fountain, did you have anything else?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to say, yeah, we're all very curious. And, uh, I, uh, I I just wanted to ask Mr. Yanzo if that is the plan for the C C S D within this grant for this test to occur, that we actually get some real data out of it that gives us an idea of what amount of volumes going in, what amount of volumes being extracted to see if what the company says falls pretty true within our realm or not before we, uh, go down this, uh, uh, this path. And I also concur with everything that Crosby said. Uh, there are a lot of loose ends here that need to be addressed, uh, as a whole, not just keep on focusing on the primary thing, but you need to look at how everything ends up being addressed. So I I thank you for that.
Thank you. Well, I'm assuming that's what a pilot project is, is a a test study to see if it works, to see how well it works. And I'm assuming we are going to be testing the resulting water that's being removed from this as well, aren't we? Before we do anything with it. Um, do you know, Mr. Danson, if they have done anything like this anywhere else? Or are we the first that they're doing the pilot with?
Uh, well, I I know that they have, uh, another project very similar in Ventura that they've, you know, that they're doing similar things. I don't know if it's the exact same thing that that they're proposing here, but, um, but yeah, they, it it is, it's but to my knowledge, it's like I I I'm not exactly sure how, uh, you know, like what the pilot project that we're doing here, if it's exactly being done everywhere else, I'm not sure.
Okay, and of course, we're not committing to actually doing a a big full-scale project like this.
No, we're not that, we're nowhere near that step.
This is a test.
Yeah, all all of those questions that Mr. Fountain and Mr. Schwartz said, I mean, yes, we have to answer all of those uh, before we even consider going to a larger project.
Okay, Brad, you had a question?
Just wanted to clarify, we still have to be selected also.
Yes.
Yeah, that's true.
It's not official, it's not official yet, I guess.
Well, I'm hoping we get selected because, you know, if this pilot project turns out to be as effective as they're claiming it's going to be, it could save us a lot of, uh, headache in the long run, if it, if and when it became time to run the W R and dealing with the brine waste. So, okay, anybody else? Don't see any hands. Okay. Future agenda items. Oh, Jim?
I'm sorry to be slow, but I wonder, Ray, if you could just comment on the brain pit is already had water in it, and now I'm sure it's got a lot more water in it than it did before. What are the plans about removing that water, or do you plan to leave it there and let it soak in? I don't know.
No, we we already, we we trucked out a good portion of it already.
Okay.
Where are you trucking it to?
To South, South, South San Luis Sanitary Sanitation District.
Okay. Okay, that's the rainwater that's accumulated in the brine pond that you're
No, I'm talking about the the brine and those brine tanks because, you know, we there there was some brine that was accumulated, you know, for some of some of the testing that we did.
Oh, okay.
That's not really, that's not related to, that's not related to this project. It was more you know, when we did some, because you know, we do have to run the the project, you know, when for maintenance purposes. And when we installed the the diverse osmosis filters, we needed to run some tests on that too.
Yeah, I was actually asking about the rainwater.
Oh, yeah, well, those those should be being pumped pretty soon here. Because it does get, it gets pumped over to the there's a sand, like a sand pit, like kind of next to it, that that it needs to that the the percolation is not, it needs to be pumped at the same rate as the way it's percolating. And right now, it's not percolating well because of the the high groundwater.
Okay, so basically it gets pumped into the percolation ponds?
Not 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 the one in the wastewater plant, where where the wastewater plant disposes, it's over, there there's another sand pit, like right next to that, that that we've been, but that's that's where we would pump it to.
Okay.
I think you can, you can see that sand pit if you look at a Google, Google air shot of the WRF site and it's kind of sort of in between the Empowerment Basin and that house that the district has there, isn't it, Mr. D'Anzo?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Okay. How many truckloads of brine waste did we take to South County?
I think we only took, I think we only took one.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Okay, does anybody have any future agenda items? Mr. Pearson?
Yes, I I'd like to put on the future agenda if if we can't discuss it now, whether we can go back to meeting in person rather than zooming.
Okay. I would like to see us meet in person and Zoom. Because meeting in person without Zoom, it's not recorded for the public to to view later. So let's have that discussion. I think maybe that discussion needs to come before the board if it's going to involve Zoom too.
Yes, because it's going to cost you a lot of money to do that.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, we can put that on the agenda. Anybody else? No? Okay. Then I guess we're done. Let me see what time it is. It is three thirty-three and I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting unless somebody objects to observe adjourning the meeting. Any objections? Of course not. Thank, thank you. We'll see you next month.